Individuals wishing to address the Planning Commission under matters from the public may do so in person via email or Zoom. Any of the members of the public logged into Zoom or meeting wish to speak under public expression, please use your raise hand feature to allow staff to add you to this portion of the meeting. Do we have anyone online this morning?
There are no raised hands on Zoom.
Right. Do we have any members of the public in the room who wish to speak on, uh, under public expression for items not on the agenda today? All right, seeing none. All right. Agenda item number five is Consent Calendar, uh, which is approval of our February 20th, 2025, meeting minutes.
I make a motion to approve the February 20, 25 minutes.
I'll second that motion.
Great.
Commissioner Pollan?
Thank you.
Yes.
Commissioner Wedeman?
Yes.
Commissioner Richards?
I'd be proper to have.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Chair Bobini?
Yes.
Motion passes with Commissioner Richards descending.
Abstaining.
All right. Agenda item number six, which is our regular calendar. First, we have, uh, item six A, which is case number U underscore 2023 dash zero zero one two. Do we have staff report?
Hello, um, planning commissioners, um, members of the public. Um, project planner Shelby Miller here. The project I am presenting is a coastal development use permit. Um, the project number is U underscore 2023 dash zero zero one two. Um, I am presenting a coast, a, uh, the, the, the use permit is for active recreation, sorry. The project is located approximately a mile and a half north of Westport, uh, just west of State Route One and Branscombe Road. Uh, the parcel is an unestablished, um, segment of the California Coastal Trail and is located at 39,000, uh, North Highway One in Westport. APN number is zero one three dash eight nine zero dash zero one. Um, the coastal, uh, California Coastal Trail is a very large, um, work in progress recreational trail with the goal of providing access to and along California's, uh, 1,100 mile coastline, as you can see. It's not very. There we go. Okay. Um, when complete, the coastal trail will be a continuous trail along or near the coastline, um, linking the Oregon border and to the Mexican border. The vision is a continuous system that connects parks, beaches, and bicycle paths. The project request is a coastal development, uh, use permit to establish a recreational trail as outlined in, um, this map here. Uh, construct a stairway, a driveway, a parking lot for five cars, including one accessible, uh, parking space, and install informational signage at the trailheads and along the trail. The recreational trails include the lateral trail that runs along the, um, bluff top edge and to the proposed stairway, um, and through De Haven Beach and, uh, to the northern property line, which is here, um, and a vertical trail from the parking lot to, um, the lateral trail. Um, there you go. Uh, the proposed stairway, um, has been designed to be located in an area that has already been disturbed, as you can see to the left here of, uh, the map here. Um, and, uh, so here is the path to the stairway, which is right in this area, um, here. Some portions of, uh, the existing, um, some, yeah, some portions of the existing lateral trail are less than five feet, um, from the bluff top edge. So we have had the applicant reroute the, um, trail about 25 feet inland from, um, where it originally is right now, as you can see. This is looking south of, uh, where it is, so the, um, tr- the ocean is to the right of this picture right here. And you can see it's, it's, uh, the bluff is, has been eroding, um, historically. Um, and so one of the main concerns was just safety issues. So, uh, we've had the applicant reroute the trail to be, um, more inland, so it, uh, allows for safety and just longer trail access here. Um, and then, uh, some signage that will be allowed, um, is this one here. Um, and it's basically to make the public aware of the waves and cliffs. Um, and they don't want to have no, uh, they won't have any like bikes or, um, motorized vehicles. No camping will be allowed, no fires or fireworks. Um, and this will be at the trailheads, but then there will also be, uh, signage for, um, basically allowing, uh, or basically designating areas where people that need wheelchairs or just persons of disabilities, with disabilities, um, can access because the stairway, um, as you can see, is not for that. Um, and then, uh, oh yeah, there's also other signages that will be for restricting encroachment in environmentally sensitive habitat areas and hazard areas. Um, there will, there won't be any restrooms or garbage collection, water utility, uh, needs or other amenities. And, um, the project is within the Remote Residential Land Use Classification and Zoning District. And so, uh, for, um, oh, there's also a management plan that accompanies the project, um, which is very interesting. Uh, basically, conditional uses within this classification include recreation, education, um, conservation and development of natural resources. And the applicant and project proposes to facilitate public education, environmental, uh, restoration initiatives by tar- uh, by part partnering with educators, local tribes, and other scientists. Uh, and then public education programs would include, but not limited to, uh, nature walks, citizen science projects led by experts, um, and cooperative management that supports sustainable traditional gathering and fishing by local tribes. Uh, the project does not include any bathroom facilities, as I've stated prior, um, or the need for adequate utilities. However, the property would be accessed, um, by, uh, via State Route One, and Caltrans has approved their driveway and, um, proposed, uh, stairway or, uh, parking lot, sorry. Um, and the county has prepared an initial study and a negative declaration for the proposed project. The county determines that the project would not have a significant adverse impact on the environment. And as previously stated, the project proposes to improve public access to the California Coastal Trail and public beaches. Um, and the management plan, uh, was proposed. Uh, Westport Village Society has also assumed responsibility and liability of the project. And, um, just wanted to note that a biological report has been, um, prepared for the project and identified several environmentally sensitive habitat areas. And the project, um, was designed essentially to avoid all of these environmentally sensitive habitat areas. Um, although, yes, the project, uh, sorry, the proposed stairway will be constructed within the 100-foot buffer of, um, some sensitive species. Um, but there won't be any impact on these species. That is all. Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you. Do we have any questions from the commissioners for staff? Yes, Marie.
Hey, I have a couple. Um, so having done the Fort Bragg Coastal Trail and recognizing how difficult it is to keep people on the trail you establish, um, I'm a little concerned that you're going to end up with two parallel tracks out there. And the reality is, is people really want to get as close to the bluff edge as they can. Thad and I struggled with this on the North Fort Bragg Coastal Trail because there are a number of arc sites out there. And, um, I mean, I don't want to back up the whole project, but I'm not really sure what to do about that. Uh, because we tried everything. We tried putting out wood to keep people from walking on the trail. We tried putting out fencing, symbolic fencing. At the end of the day, the only thing that worked was a five-foot-high wire fence, which is really not pretty. Um, and so I guess like in a big level, I'm like kind of concerned that you're not going to eliminate the coastal trail. You're just adding a new trail for them to maintain and repair. And I'm not sure that there's a lot of benefit to it, so that's one big question. And then the other question I have, and it's more for the applicant when he wants to get up and speak to it, is there's a lot of conditions in this project, much more than I would expect for a trail project. And I would like to hear from him if there are any that are concerned to them. Because as a trail developer myself, I would be a little shocked to see this many conditions on a project like this. Um, so those are my, I don't know if there's answers to those questions. I guess those are concerns. Sorry, but.
I was, uh, so for, um, in terms of like protecting, uh, environmentally sensitive habitat areas and archaeological resources, um, the, I mean, yes, you can put symbolic fencing and whatever, like, uh, signage and stuff. Um, however, I think, well, I don't know. Um, you can try as hard as you can with, you know, keeping people on the trail. And I feel like those are the reasons why we put the, uh, conditions on there.
Yeah. I mean, we just had a real hard problem with it. And then what happens is you get trail brading. Instead of having one trail, people get off of the main trail when they see the other little trail. And so you have lots of little paths and crossovers between the two trails. And you kind of never really eliminate the outside trail. I mean, uh, on the Fort, mind you, the Fort Bragg Coast Trail gets probably a lot more visitors than this would. So there's the possibility that vegetation might grow up such that, um, maybe people won't be on the existing trail. But it's just, um, it's a practical problem that's very challenging to solve. And I just worry that creating a whole new trail alignment doesn't, doesn't really solve your concern of keeping people off the bluff edge and away from falling into the drink. They'll still go all the way out there because that's, I don't know, humans come to the ocean. They want to get right as close as they can. Um, so maybe one of the things that we can think about, and I don't even know if this is possible given the CEQA document, is maybe not requiring the inland route until such time in the future as it's necessary. Um, and, and I'd love to hear from the applicant to find out what their thoughts are about that because, you know, it's a big expense. And if you're not really going to be able to close the existing volunteer trail, anyway, that's my thought.
Diana.
I had the same thought, and I was wondering, you know, how do you eliminate one? Or do you just let it, let it go with this new trail and have side by side? And let the public make a choice. Um, but I'd like to hear from the applicant too.
Do we have any other comments from commissioners? All right. Um, at this time, I'd like to invite the applicant to speak. Do we have the applicant in the room? Please state your name, uh, for the public record.
I'm Thad Van Buren. I represent the Westport Village Society, which is a, um, nonprofit, uh, land trust of, in the local area. To address the questions that have been posed, there is currently, the most active, um, um, public entry onto the property currently is at the far north end, a very easy access there from the south end of Westport Union Landing State Park. People park there and, um, then they proceed directly down, uh, the low bluff there to the beach. So that's the primary access to the parcel. Um, what we're proposing is to create, um, access to the large headland to the south. And, um, the mapping, I'm not sure you can see it from the mapping, but, uh, there, the main attraction is going to be the bluff edge. People get great views from there. They're not going to be, I think, wandering into the inland areas because, um, there's no view there. There's heavy vegetation, high thick vegetation with berry bushes and such. There's large sw- uh, uh, wetland area that's in a depression. And so there's no real opportunities for, um, access other than, uh, close to the bluff edge. Um, the bluff is actively retreating as sea level rises, as, uh, the coastal, um, uh, wave action works on the cliffs. Um, and so we're going to have to, um, continue to migrate the trail inland with, uh, with the bluff edge. There is a strong safety concern there, so we're going to actively, uh, put signage out there to try and prevent people from going right out to the bluff edge because it really is quite dangerous. Um, but I think people are naturally going to want to stay on the lateral trail that exists closest to the bluff edge. And there's not a lot of, um, opportunity, uh, because of the vegetation on the property uh, or, um, the view shed, uh, that would make people want to go farther inland to create braided trails that are parallel to that bluff edge. Um, so I hope that in part addresses, uh, one of the questions there. The, um, vertical trail from the parking lot out to the bluff edge, um, is also a pretty well-established, um, opportunity for going out to the coast, directly out to the coast. And it'll provide handicap, um, accessibility because it's fairly level from the parking lot out to the, directly out to the coast, uh, edge there. So, um, I don't think there will be reasons why people, uh, try to diverge from that trail because it's the most direct way right out to the lateral trail. So I think, um, we don't have high concerns about, um, uh, people departing from the trail. We're going to keep it mowed. It's not going to be a otherwise improved trail. It's simply going to be mowed so people can, it's going to be the easiest way for people to walk. And they wouldn't really have a reason to walk off the trail because either there's no view or there's a lot of high vegetation with berry bushes and such, um, that would prevent their accessing these other areas. Um, to address another question, um, we were a little surprised, uh, by the number of conditions imposed on this project. And, uh, we are, uh, a group of volunteers essentially that got a grant from the State Coastal Conservancy to acquire this property, and a condition of that was to try and improve the access. Uh, through many public meetings, we honed in on a project that we thought was minimal footprint as possible, uh, but that did improve that access for, uh, people. And, um, we're in the position that, um, I'm not sure that we can oppose any of the conditions, but we would certainly, uh, like a project that was a little, uh, less, uh, difficult to, uh, meet all the expectations here. Let's just say that. Um, one of the ones that we did not anticipate was condition 12, which is, uh, requiring us to get money to pay a land surveyor to, um, physically offer to dedicate the easements that we're creating here. The problem with that is the lateral trail, uh, you can survey that and record an alignment. And a couple of months down the road, that alignment's going to change because the bluff edge is changing. So, um, the, the whole property is already dedicated. Uh, essentially, we're trustee for the State Coastal Conservancy. So if we ever default on our obligations for the property, it goes back to them or is given to another land trust who can meet the obligations. So, um, all I can say is, uh, you know, if there were, uh, less conditions, that would make it a little easier for us to manage and maybe not have to spend quite as much money to bring it into, uh, realization here. Um, we've already applied for the grant money, um, to do the construction, but the hearing on that won't happen, um, until September because this hearing was delayed. Uh, we originally, uh, had hoped that it would be heard by you earlier. And, um, I'm of, I just want to encourage you to approve the project. If you want to, uh, consider changes in the conditions, that's your prerogative, not mine. But I do encourage you to approve the, the permit, um.
Yeah, so I'd like a little clarity, um, because I feel like there's, maybe I'm missing something. So there's a, an irrevocable offer to dedicate that the staff is requiring that's pretty far inland of the existing trail alignment. Um, are, is staff requiring that that irrevocable offer to dedicate get developed at this point?
Um, thank you. So, um, the State Coastal Conservancy and Westport Village Society have already offered a, uh, offer to dedicate. Um, and they have that in place already. I just wanted to note that. Um, the Coastal Commission requested, uh, or recommended that we record a second offer to dedicate that, um, essentially spoke on what is being proposed, which is the lateral and the vertical and staircase, um, uh, easements and stuff. Um, however, um, we talked about creating a, um, essentially just creating an area, or not area, but basically saying like, should the Coastal Commission and Coastal Conservancy determine that the offer to dedicate recorded in, um, the original offer to dedicate, uh, document 2022 dash one three six one six of Mendocino County Records satisfies this requirement, no additional offer to dedicate shall be required, and this condition shall be deemed satisfied. Um, and we thought about adding that, um, to the first part of condition number 11, um, to change that a little.
I do, I don't feel like my question got answered.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Like.
Can you repeat it?
Like, are there two tri- parallel trails? Or are we only requiring that them to do their existing trail?
Oh, okay. So for the State Coastal Conservancy and Westport Village Society's, um, offer to dedicate, that is, um, an offer to dedicate is for the entire parcel. So the trail itself is not, um, as an offer to dedicate.
Okay, so you're, you're not requiring them to build a separate trail than the one that they have right now?
No.
Okay, so that was my misunderstanding. And then, um, I have a, and I was looking at the special conditions myself. And, um, like 19 and 20, uh, I don't know exactly what they mean, but saying that, um, the trail needs to comply with the Uniform Building Code shall be stable, firm, and slip resistant, that does not sound like a dirt trail to me. And I just want to make sure that Thad is aware that that condition is in there and that you're, that it's acceptable to you. And then, um, likewise, special condition 20, I'm sorry, special condition 19 requiring, um, bluff top view, view per- sheds for persons with disabilities. Um, ADA accessible trails are very expensive to build, and they're very invasive on the environment. And they're not necessarily required by law. So I just want to, um, make sure that you're looking at special condition 19 and thinking about the implications of that. And then the other thing that I would like to encourage is there's lots of different signage that's 14, 15, 16, 17, 18. I'm sure there were others that I missed. Um, and that signage really should be consolidated. It shouldn't be all over the site. And, um, so some thinking about that, I think, would be helpful. Sorry, I have so much to say, but.
Diana.
Yeah, on that, could we consolidate the signage by the stairs? You know, I'm trying to, because it is disruptive to have signs being put up. It kind of takes away like the wildness of these, of our coast. So if we could find places, I agree, it should be consolidated. And, and, uh, where's the best place, right? Is it going to be near the stairs in the sense of, or by parking? I think that's a great idea to try to consolidate the signs. I also am in favor of, I want to see this happen in, and I understand the, and, and I want to, uh, applaud the work you, your committee has been doing to get this to happen. So, um, and I concur with, uh, Commissioner Jones in how do we, you know, protect the environment? How do we protect the best of our ability, the, the trail users, right? With the least amount of impact and cost to developing this trail? So, I don't know if we need all these, um, uh, conditions right now. So I'm not sure how to go about it. Do we go through it in each condition and propose? Or do you come back to us? And I'm not sure what the timeline is on, you know, this project, if there is a timeline, that we have to prove it.
I just wanted to note that pursuant to Mendocino County Code, um, section 20.528.015F. Um, so, uh, if you look at that, it actually has, um, it, it states specifically that, um, access to beach and bluff top viewpoints shall be provided and signs for handicapped persons where pa- where parking areas can be close enough to beach or viewing level to be reachable by wheelchair ramps. And barriers shall be placed, uh, marking wheelchair ramps and the limits to safe approach of a bluff. So that is the reason why, um, condition of approval, um, 19 was put in. Um, and then for condition of approval number 20, that is straight from the Uniform Building Code, um, for people, uh, persons with disabilities.
So I think there may be some flexibility with the way that the code is written, that it could still be compliant with that section. It sounds like there needs to be some form of handicap access, but we might be able to massage that a little bit if the commission would prefer.
I think that sounds great. Just, I agree that it would be great to see this project happen. Having access to our coast is a beautiful thing for our residents and people visiting. Does staff need time to do so? Do, I'm trying to think process wise, what would be the best way to make any changes? Or if, like Commissioner Wedeman was stating, do we want to go through them one by one?
So I think staff's recommendation would be to hear any public comment on it and then get some direction from the commission about comprehensive changes. And depending on what was required, we can either take a recess and try to do some of that today or ask for a continuance.
Great. I think hearing from the applicant approval would be most appreciated today since they have their grant coming up in September, I believe you cited. So if the rest of the commissioners would like to proceed that way, let's move that way. Great. Did we have any other public comment from you, sir?
Let me just comment on the discussion that just occurred here. There are basically two access points, the far north end and the parking lot. We have already installed two entry point access signs, one at far north end, which is heavily used, and one near where the stairway will be on the top of the bluff because historically there was kind of a little funny dirt road that came in there. It's not really too obvious anymore. But just to the point of your comments there, we would like to have most of the signage and the warnings and such consolidated at those entry points. We have installed a couple of signs near the bluff edge warning about the danger issue. Again, I don't think that there's going to be a lot of need for signs or symbolic fencing to keep people on the trail for the reasons I've explained earlier. So in terms of our intention for the handicapped access, it seems to me that the only reasonable access is going to be from the parking lot directly out to the bluff edge, which is a very level trail. We intended only to mow it, and it's firm. In the wintertime, it could be a little slippery or wet because of the rain and such, but it can pretty much be handled, I think, by a person in a wheelchair as a mowed trail. So that's what we're thinking of. I just wanted to address those points so you're aware of them as you consider this matter.
Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we're going to open for public comment. Thank you, sir. The commission will now hear public comment on this item. The commission will start with public comments in the room and then hear from telecommenters that are connected virtually via Zoom. When called to speak, please state your name for the record. Public comment is limited to three minutes per person. Speakers are asked to please address their comments to the meeting chair and to refrain from using profanity or engaging in conversation with members of the audience or staff. Do we have any members of the public in the room who wish to speak on this item? Seeing none, do we have any commentators via Zoom?
There are no raised hands on Zoom.
All right. Thank you. All right. I'm going to close the public hearing on this item with staff direction and with the other commissioners. Do we want to discuss further before going to recess?
I think it's good to discuss more. I want to throw out an idea for Thad to consider. So rather than doing a separate irrevocable offer to dedicate that would require a surveyor, what if you just dedicate the whole parcel to public access? Then you don't have to do a surveyor, coastal commission's happy, you're not using it for anything else but that anyway. It saves you money. I saw a nod of a head, so I think that could change Number 11 significantly and make it a lot easier for the applicant to implement. And then I really do want to think about some different wording for Number 19 that really talks about where that, what segment of the trail that bluff wheelchair accessible access is going to be required for. Because I think Thad, while you think a wheelchair can get down it on grass, the Uniform Building Code does not, and they're going to make you asphalt it or do some sort of compacted surface. So I think it's really important to think through what's realistic for the site and what's realistic for the budget and the project, and then also maintenance of that. Because just having watched what happened on the Fort Bragg Coastal Trail with our shoulder that was supposed to be compacted and within three years has been rivaled by the rain and everywhere and lots of maintenance. So I think that really needs to be thought better. And then maybe you could put all the signage under one condition that says signage shall be consolidated and then have all the signage underneath that one, that just to make it easier so that you don't have to say it for each of those many special conditions. Those are my thoughts.
Just have a question on that thought for staff. Is there a requirement that there be ADA access available for approval of this? Because I noted that the Westport Union State Beach, which has access to this as well, provides these free beach wheelchair accesses for people who have limited mobility. And so it's not as if this area is precluded from access for those individuals currently. It looked like they're on the north end of the area, people can access it via a trail. And so I want to make sure that we're in compliance with the law, but also it feels like maybe we're creating an additional hurdle that isn't necessary for meeting the needs of that population.
So according to the Menasino County Chapter, code, sorry, Chapter 20.528 Coastal Access Regulations and Open Space Easements, since they are proposing a lateral easement or any type of easement, it is required to have handicap access. It doesn't need to do, there doesn't need to be have like the wheelchair thing like the Westport Union Beach does, but there is a requirement for access to beach and bluff top viewpoints. And so I think that the vertical easement from the parking lot to the lateral easement is sufficient.
Can you show that on the map? Just get us on a site plan? Thank you.
So this vertical easement is sufficient for the Menasino County Code, Chapter 20.528. So this would only need to be required, but not the wheelchair thing that you were talking about.
And do you have any sense of the contour of the property, if that would actually permit an ADA accessible trail? Because you know.
It's very flat in that area.
So your sense is it would?
Yeah, yes, definitely.
If I may, so this again was Section 20.528.015F. And I'll just note that it does talk about in this section that this requirement is where parking areas are close enough to a beach or a viewing level to be reachable by wheelchair ramps. So, you know, this is something that I think we can talk about if there's any other sort, you know, what that distance may entail, leading out there and be able to work with staff on some revisions possibly to that condition to make it a bit more clear about where the access would be required to be provided and the extent of that.
Yeah, because it looks like from the map that that's about 300 feet, which is a little more than a wheelchair ramp. I mean, one of the ways we did it in Fort Bragg, not to toot the horn or whatever, but the middle section of the trail, we never developed from downtown and determined that, you know, being at the parking lot was going to be adequate for that location because we had other nearby locations where you could easily assess ADA. And given that there's ADA accessibility just down the coast here, maybe, I mean, I don't know, I don't want to beat this to the death, but it's up to you. Do you, do you want an asphalt trail there or not? Because that's probably what you're going to end up with for that section of the trail, for it to be ADA. Or you have long-term maintenance issues with any kind of compacted surface, given the rains.
Commissioner Wedeman.
I'm, I, I am wondering if there's, you know, where the parking is and where there's accessibility already, could that be enough? I mean, can it be not all the way down to the beach? That's the question there because there are other places. Yet, you know, trying to be sensitive to people who need help with access. Like for instance, Pelican Bluff Trail, I don't believe they have anything that is wheelchair accessible.
They do have portions.
But it doesn't go all the way.
It does not go all the way. There's limits to the trail. There's only one loop that is an ADA accessible trail.
Right. Right. So that's something to think about, how we could mitigate it to make it ongoing affordable. I have nothing else. I think I gave what I needed to give to staff to, if they need to rewrite and come back with something so we could pass it today, that would be great. I just need to hear back from staff if that's doable.
Yeah, we're happy to give it a shot and come back if you want to take a recess for 15 minutes.
That sounds great. Thank you. We're going to go into recess for 15 minutes and come back at 10:30.
It was helpful to have somebody there kind of holding my hand and guiding me and letting me know this is kind of the normal. It felt like I was becoming a new mom, so it was very, it was very interesting and helpful, very, very helpful.
You know, there was that self-conscious part of me, like, will I be accepted even though I'm not perfect?
What I like the most is that she really listens.
The support that she gives me is special because she does it with love and it's, it's just natural, you know? That's all I could say. It just feels like somebody that I've known since I was little.
You know, I said to Jeanette, I said, Jeanette, you're supposed to be with me for five years. Jeanette said, yeah, I know, I'm going to be with you guys for five years. That's when I said, well, I guess I can trust her, she's going to be with us for five years.
And Sparrow really enjoyed it, yeah. She knew when Gabby came, we were going to be making something or learning something, and she'd instantly start digging through Gabby's bags to find out what activity we were going to do.
Not only did we get the assistance with this, with this program, but we also made a really good friend. I'm happy to call Gabby our friend.
I think the relationship that we've built has been just, she's a part of the family.
We're the Office of Emergency Services, and we're committed to providing the most up-to-date and accurate information so that you and your family can stay safe during an emergency.
or understand or even comprehend.
Visit MendoReady.org. It's our one-stop shop for emergency information. You can sign up for emergency alerts, find your pre-established evacuation zone on our current emergencies map, and find hazard and preparedness information.
I was going to have to really go to the well and become accountable and adjust to a lot
Imagine you're faced with a disaster such as a wildfire, and you're ordered to evacuate. I'll bet you wish you had more time in that moment.
of things differently.
We started the program, my daughter was about three months, and my daughter's 22
Now's your chance to buy yourself that time. Sign up for Nixle and Mendo Alerts on our website, MendoReady.org.
months now.
Do it today.
If you want your family to be as resilient as possible, it's important to take some
Something I love about my child, that she's healthy, she's happy, she knows that she's
time today and visit MendoReady.org, where you can look up your pre-established evacuation
cared for and loved. Those are some of the things that I wanted to make sure that she had, and she has them.
zones on our current emergencies map. You can also find important tools to help maintain your situational awareness, such
I'm happy today with my daughter.
as the Alert California Wildfire Cameras and the Caltrans Road Conditions Cameras.
She's the greatest thing in my life, and I'm glad to wake up and see her.
We hope you'll take some time today to prepare so that your family can be Mendo-ready.
Everything I do, I do it for her.
Thank you.
I was more elated and thankful because for three months, I was in babyland. And when you're in baby world, you're just kind of flying by the seat of your pants and hoping, you know, that you're just supportive in the ways that you can be supportive.
We started the program, my daughter was about three months, and my daughter's 22 months now. Something I love about my child, that she's healthy, she's happy, she knows that she's cared for and loved. Those are some of the things that I wanted to make sure that she had, and she has them.
I'm happy today with my daughter. She's the greatest thing in my life, and I'm glad to wake up and see her. Everything I do, I do it for her.
I was more elated and thankful because for three months, I was in babyland. And when you're in baby world, you're just kind of flying by the seat of your pants and hoping, you know, that you're just supportive in the ways that you can be supportive.
We started the program, my daughter was about three months, and my daughter's 22 months now. Something I love about my child, that she's healthy, she's happy, she knows that she's cared for and loved. Those are some of the things that I wanted to make sure that she had, and she has them.
I'm happy today with my daughter. She's the greatest thing in my life, and I'm glad to wake up and see her. Everything I do, I do it for her.
I was more elated and thankful because for three months, I was in babyland. And when you're in baby world, you're just kind of flying by the seat of your pants and hoping, you know, that you're just supportive in the ways that you can be supportive.
We started the program, my daughter was about three months, and my daughter's 22 months now. Something I love about my child, that she's healthy, she's happy, she knows that she's cared for and loved. Those are some of the things that I wanted to make sure that she had, and she has them.
I'm happy today with my daughter. She's the greatest thing in my life, and I'm glad to wake up and see her. Everything I do, I do it for her.
I was more elated and thankful because for three months, I was in babyland. And when you're in baby world, you're just kind of flying by the seat of your pants and hoping, you know, that you're just supportive in the ways that you can be supportive.
We started the program, my daughter was about three months, and my daughter's 22 months now. Something I love about my child, that she's healthy, she's happy, she knows that she's cared for and loved. Those are some of the things that I wanted to make sure that she had, and she has them.
I'm happy today with my daughter. She's the greatest thing in my life, and I'm glad to wake up and see her. Everything I do, I do it for her.
I was more elated and thankful because for three months, I was in babyland. And when you're in baby world, you're just kind of flying by the seat of your pants and hoping, you know, that you're just supportive in the ways that you can be supportive.
We started the program, my daughter was about three months, and my daughter's 22 months now. Something I love about my child, that she's healthy, she's happy, she knows that she's cared for and loved. Those are some of the things that I wanted to make sure that she had, and she has them.
I'm happy today with my daughter. She's the greatest thing in my life, and I'm glad to wake up and see her. Everything I do, I do it for her.
I was more elated and thankful because for three months, I was in babyland. And when you're in baby world, you're just kind of flying by the seat of your pants and hoping, you know, that you're just supportive in the ways that you can be supportive.
We started the program, my daughter was about three months, and my daughter's 22 months now. Something I love about my child, that she's healthy, she's happy, she knows that she's cared for and loved. Those are some of the things that I wanted to make sure that she had, and she has them.
I'm happy today with my daughter. She's the greatest thing in my life, and I'm glad to wake up and see her. Everything I do, I do it for her.
I was more elated and thankful because for three months, I was in babyland. And when you're in baby world, you're just kind of flying by the seat of your pants and hoping, you know, that you're just supportive in the ways that you can be supportive.
We started the program, my daughter was about three months, and my daughter's 22 months now. Something I love about my child, that she's healthy, she's happy, she knows that she's cared for and loved. Those are some of the things that I wanted to make sure that she had, and she has them.
I'm happy today with my daughter. She's the greatest thing in my life, and I'm glad to wake up and see her. Everything I do, I do it for her.
I was more elated and thankful because for three months, I was in babyland. And when you're in baby world, you're just kind of flying by the seat of your pants and hoping, you know, that you're just supportive in the ways that you can be supportive.
We started the program, my daughter was about three months, and my daughter's 22 months now. Something I love about my child, that she's healthy, she's happy, she knows that she's cared for and loved. Those are some of the things that I wanted to make sure that she had, and she has them.
I'm happy today with my daughter. She's the greatest thing in my life, and I'm glad to wake up and see her. Everything I do, I do it for her.
I was more elated and thankful because for three months, I was in babyland. And when you're in baby world, you're just kind of flying by the seat of your pants and hoping, you know, that you're just supportive in the ways that you can be supportive.
We started the program, my daughter was about three months, and my daughter's 22 months now. Something I love about my child, that she's healthy, she's happy, she knows that she's cared for and loved. Those are some of the things that I wanted to make sure that she had, and she has them.
I'm happy today with my daughter. She's the greatest thing in my life, and I'm glad to wake up and see her. Everything I do, I do it for her.
I was more elated and thankful because for three months, I was in babyland. And when you're in baby world, you're just kind of flying by the seat of your pants and hoping, you know, that you're just supportive in the ways that you can be supportive.
Give it a try. You've got nothing to lose. It's free. And I'm grateful that I took advantage because it's something that has put me in touch with my child or closer to my child in her development.
Personally, I think everybody could benefit from the home visiting programs.
I think that as a parent now, I'm grateful for support, more than I was before.
I filled out that form not knowing what I was doing. I am very, very grateful that I did it, because it's really helping me a lot.
Well, I was a new mom, and I had no experience taking care of a newborn.
There isn't like a book on how to raise a kid.
We come from like a lot of family history of, you know, drugs, violence, alcoholism, so we didn't want our daughter to experience any of that.
I thought that a parent was supposed to be loving, nurturing, supposed to be there for their kid, you know, provide food, shelter, joy. And going in, becoming a parent for her, I had no clue how to provide that.
What I think parents should know about home visiting is that you can learn a lot of new things and tips and tricks, how to take care of the baby and what to do. And if you're, you know, stuck in a routine and everything being monotonous, like, they give you new resources and new tools, how to handle parenthood.
It was nice to have them kind of guiding me, even though I was not a first-time mom, I felt like a first-time mom.
It totally blew my mind over time. So much information that I had no idea about. You know, she was straightforward when, you know, teaching me this stuff and answered any of my questions. It was just a really positive experience.
What I think that parents could benefit with, with the program, is just having someone here for you, especially for first-time parents. It can be very isolating, and it can be very lonely, and having the home visitor changes that, and it feels very good.
For me, having a home visitor is like having a second mom there.
A lot has changed. I'm definitely more knowledgeable taking care of her. And I know that anytime I need advice or help from somebody, I can just call her.
It's just that little positive nudge to, hey, I'm noticing something, you know, let's find a way how to change it. And she's like, you know what, Amanda, let's pick you up, dust you off, and let's go over to, you know, see about either getting your driver's license or seeing about, you know, going to college, see if we can start something for you.
It's totally worth it. Like, even if you're on the fence at first, you don't feel like having a stranger coming in your house and teaching you about your little one, do it anyway. You know, you get the help that you need, you get professional advice on things you may not know about your child. The fact that the program has no fees or anything, it's all totally free, is fantastic.
Steph here. Staff, have you had time to amend and update the changes?
If I may, Julia Crogg, Planning and Building Services Director. We'll have Shelby go through the red line of the resolution. And then we also have in our audience here, our Chief Building Official, Richard Angley, that'll speak to some of the building code requirements surrounding accessibility for the pathway and type of surface as well. But first, we'll hear from Shelby and then go to Rich.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So we changed Condition of Approval Number 11, which is the, prior to the issuance of the coastal development permit, the landowner shall execute and record an irrevocable offer to dedicate against the property in a form and content deemed acceptable to the Director of Menasino County Planning and Building Services and the Coastal Commission. And we added the, should the Coastal Commission and Coastal Conservancy determine that the offer to dedicate recorded in Document 2022-13616 of Menasino County Records satisfies the requirement, no additional offer to dedicate shall be required, and this condition shall be deemed satisfied. So we added that one. And then we also added to now Condition of Approval 12, prior to the issuance of any building permit in reliance of this coastal development permit. And then the, wherever possible, the following required signs shall be consolidated. So we still have all of the signage attached to this. Then Condition of Approval 14, we changed the, any required accessible trail from the parking lot to the bluff top viewpoints shall be stable, firm, and slip-resistant, and shall comply with the Uniform Building Code Section 11B-302. And yeah, no other changes, I don't think. Yeah, no other changes. Thank you.
And then if I may, we'll have our Chief Building Official, Richard Angley, come up to the podium here and just talk to the commission just a little bit about some of the accessibility requirements for a trail such as this with some level area, and then also the required surface that's mentioned in that condition about the stable, firm surface. Go ahead.
Please state your name.
Richard Angley, Chief Building Official. So the requirements for trails are a little bit different than a standard building or structure. The way it's worded is that it says a portion of all trails shall be accessible. And the idea behind it is that where it's, you know, reasonable to make the trail accessible, it would be a firm, stable surface from the parking area to the accessible portion of the trail. So once you hit terrain difficulties, maybe you're crossing a gully and there's a staircase down and a staircase up, because you're not going to put a bridge across it, then that would be the limits of your accessible compliance. You know, you would get up to the edge of there, there'd be a turnaround spot for a wheelchair, or, you know, if there's spots to sit for other people or something like that. So it's not the entire trail, you're just doing the best you can within reason to make them accessible. There's some guidelines that are provided by federal government as well as state parks that are often referenced to meet the compliance for trails. So like when you're out at McCarrick or these other areas, you'll notice spots where they don't necessarily meet our standard accessibility compliance, but they meet this alternate compliance that's been approved through the state for people with disabilities. So it's, you know, if you got up to the top of a bluff and then you had a deep staircase down to the beach, it wouldn't be expected that you would put some kind of inaccessible ramp to get down to the bottom, because that would be unreasonable. I think that answers the questions that they were posed to me.
Can I ask clarifying questions?
Absolutely.
So what surface would you require?
So the essay says firm and stable. They have a bulletin out about using decomposed granite, you know, obviously concrete, asphalt, those are also firm and stable. In their determination, they talk about, you know, the ground should not be able to be scored. I think they give a method of like dragging something across it. It's been a while since I've read it, so I'd have to relook it up to make sure of that. So it's not, I couldn't tell you any one surface. I couldn't say it has to be concrete, it has to be asphalt, it has to be firm and stable. Could you use compacted gravel? No, I don't think that meets the intent of the code. It rains, it breaks down, it's no longer firm and stable. So if we see decomposed granite from time to time, you just got to make sure you get enough stabilizer in that, that it's not going to break apart.
And last question. My recollection is that the limit of the ADA accessibility is provide an equivalent experience, not that you have to get to a point where you can't continue the trail. And so I'm just concerned that your definition would eventually require that this entire trail be paved, because it's all flat on the top up there. And instead, an equivalent experience would be being able to go out to the bluff edge, see the ocean, turn around and go home. you know, reasonable to make the trail accessible, it would be a firm, stable surface from the parking area to the accessible portion of the trail. So once you hit terrain difficulties, maybe you're crossing a gully and there's a staircase down and a staircase up because you're not going to put a bridge across it, then that would be the limits of your accessible compliance. You know, you would get up to the edge of there, there'd be a turnaround spot for a wheelchair or, you know, if there's spots to sit for other people or something like that. So it's not the entire trail. You're just doing the best you can within reason to make them accessible. There's some guidelines that are provided by federal government as well as state parks that are often referenced to meet the compliance for trails. So like when you're out at McCarrick or these other areas, you'll notice spots where they don't necessarily meet our standard accessibility compliance, but they meet this alternate compliance that's been approved through the state for people with disabilities. So it's, you know, if you got up to the top of a bluff and then you had a deep staircase down to the beach, it wouldn't be expected that you would put some kind of inaccessible ramp to get down to the bottom because that would be unreasonable. I think that answers the questions that were posed to me.
Can I ask clarifying questions?
Absolutely.
So what surface would you require?
So the SA says firm and stable. They have a bulletin out about using decomposed granite, you know, obviously concrete, asphalt, those are also firm and stable. In their determination, they talk about, you know, the ground should not be able to be scored. I think they give a method of like dragging something across it. It's been a while since I've read it, so I'd have to relook it up to make sure of that. So it's not... I couldn't tell you any one surface. I couldn't say it has to be concrete, it has to be asphalt, it has to be firm and stable. Could you use compacted gravel? No, I don't think that meets the intent of the code. It rains, it breaks down, it's no longer firm and stable. So if we see decomposed granite from time to time, you just got to make sure you get enough stabilizer in that, that it's not going to break apart.
And last question. My recollection is that the limit of the ADA accessibility is provide an equivalent experience, not that you have to get to a point where you can't continue the trail. And so I'm just concerned that your definition would eventually require that this entire trail be paved because it's all flat on the top up there. And instead, an equivalent experience would be being able to go out to the bluff edge, see the ocean, turn around and go home. Given that there's a lot of other ADA accessible locations nearby, I just want your take on that.
I think the equivalent experience is accurate, yes. So if you had, you know, two bluff top viewing areas and, you know, one of them was accessible and the other one was 30 feet away and not accessible, I think that could still be considered an equivalent experience and it would meet the requirement for that.
Thank you.
And then if I may, so I think the intention with staff for the accessible trail is we will work with the applicant to really look at what is the minimum necessary to be done for that trail, both, you know, consulting with our building division and ensuring that we're still compliant with the county zoning regulations as well. And really trying to make that as least impactful as possible, acknowledging that it's a grant funded project and a group of volunteers that's really taking on this project. So and then to the access, the offer to dedicate, you know, in looking at the recorded offer to dedicate, the reason why staff is recommending adding this language is because we think there is a possibility that, you know, the commission had requested this additional offer to dedicate, but we believe it could potentially be duplicative to what's already been recorded. So wanting that flexibility to continue that conversation with Coastal Commission and Coastal Conservancy to see if we can, you know, have that existing offer to dedicate that's already been done be deemed satisfactory for this condition of approval. And then I think to your comment about, you know, they could just dedicate the whole land instead, I think that would be reasonably compliant with this because they're going above and beyond what the requirement is of the condition. And if they wish to include more, I don't think that the county nor the Coastal Commission would say, no, you cannot offer more to dedicate. And offers to dedicate are actually exempt from coastal development permits. So that's certainly something they could do.
Okay, so you're saying that if the Coastal Commission doesn't find that the existing situation complies, the applicant can come back to you and say, we would prefer not to do a survey and just dedicate the entire property?
Correct.
And you would accept that and not find that in conflict with item number 11?
That is correct.
Okay, thanks. I'm satisfied?
Yes, thank you. I'm just reminded that of course that offer to dedicate has to be acceptable to the Coastal Commission as well. So it's not just my unilateral decision.
Yeah, but obviously the Coastal Commission would be happy to take more.
Absolutely.
Deputy County Councilman Matthew Kudrowski, briefly to that point, I'm a little confused about the request for a second offer to dedicate. The current offer to dedicate seems to already encumber the entire parcel. That offer to dedicate also says there should be a subsequent offer to dedicate for the trail. So I'm not sure what they're thinking about layering. I think with the added language, we're doing the best we can to get things moving today and then still continue the conversation later without looking like we're not doing something that they asked us to do.
Do we have any other comments on the changes from the commission? All right. Resituated here where I'm at. Yes. All right. I am now going to close the public hearing. And the matter is before the commission, public comment is no longer permitted. I'm going to invite a motion from the commission.
Since it's my district, I move that we adopt the resolution as amended in the Planning Commission meeting.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We get roll call, please. Commissioner Wedeman?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Richards?
About that?
You can also just touch it with your finger. The screen itself?
Commissioner Pollan?
Yes.
Chair Bobini?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. I just want to say thank you to our applicant as well and to all of our staff. Thank you.
Good job. Yay, more trails. Have a nice drive home, Ben.
All right. Thank you, everybody. We are going to move on to our next item, which is 6B U underscore 2025 dash 0002 County Mendocino Coastal Development Use Permit for the Bauer Park Restoration and Improvement Grant Project to Improve Recreational Facilities and Provide Improved Accessibility to These Features Within the Park. I'm going to open the public hearing. Yes. And do we have any correspondence or telephone calls received for this? There were some speaker request forms. That was the only ones that I received. Awesome. Thank you. And then for staff presentation, please.
Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners Julia and Crogg, Planning and Building Services Director. So as stated, the project in front of you is Coastal Development Use Permit 2025 dash 0002 for the Bauer Park Restoration and Improvement Grant Project. The Bauer Park is located in the coastal zone. It's actually at the very outer limits of the coastal zone just across the street, is not in the coastal zone. And it's about one and three quarters miles northeast of the Guadalajara Town Center and lies on the west side of Old Stage Road. There's two assessor parcel numbers associated with the site, but I believe those are one legal parcel. So the request that's in front of you is for this grant project to improve recreational facilities and provide improved accessibility to the features that are within the park. The project includes various upgrades and repairs to existing amenities as well as the addition of some new amenities. Upgrades to existing amenities include expanded and newly paved parking facilities, fence replacement, boardwalk replacement, renovation of picnic areas, repair and renovation of existing structures, an expanded basketball court and walking paths. And then new amenities include outdoor fitness equipment, a pond viewing area, new picnic areas, a dog park area, security lighting, and new water and electricity infrastructure. So this is the master plan, which is included as Attachment D within your packet. And I'll just sort of talk through in a little bit more detail those amenities that I mentioned. So currently existing within the park are two asphalt parking lots, approximately 20 parking stalls. There is a pond. It is a manmade pond. It's approximately 1.3 acres in size. There's two gathering and picnic areas, a baseball field slash soccer field, concession stand, playground, tennis courts, a basketball court, which is a half court right now, and walking paths as well as restrooms. So the project is going to make improvements to those existing amenities, including expanding and paving new parking areas to create 47 parking stalls, including four ADA stalls. The existing fence around the pond is going to be replaced and the damaged spillway boardwalk will also be rebuilt. Picnic areas will be renovated and new picnic areas will be added with accessibility for disabled persons. They'll also do replacement of the fencing around the baseball soccer field and then also the backstop and dugouts will be repaired. There'll be repairs to the concession stand and new inclusive play equipment will be installed at the existing playground. There's also going to be tennis court pavement that will be removed and then replaced with a smaller footprint. And it'll be then repainted so that it includes one tennis court and one pickleball court. And the area of the old footprint that is not repaved will be filled with decomposed granite to make a border around the new pad. The basketball court's going to be expanded from a half court to a full court. And then the walking paths throughout the park will be repaired and ramps will be added for ADA compliance and improved safety. The walking paths will be surfaced with decomposed granite, asphalt, or concrete. And then the restrooms are planned to be replaced. And then the new amenities that are going to be added is the outdoor fitness equipment within five to six locations around the walking path. And you see those throughout the area. A viewing area will be added to the southwest of the end of the pond. And then two new picnic areas are to be constructed, one that's in the middle of the park near the existing picnic area and one at the southeast side of the pond near the park entrance. There will also be a half acre fence dog area along the western boundary of the park near the playground. And then security lighting for nighttime security only is planned to be added. And then new water and electricity infrastructure just to bring the park up to current codes. So the property is zoned and also within the open space general plan land use classification. It is also within the Guadalajara Town Plan area. And both the existing and proposed use of the site most closely resembles a civic use type of community recreation. And it is a permissible use, a conditional use, excuse me, within the open space zoning district and therefore subject to this coastal development use permit. The property is also located within compatibility zone D of the Ocean Ridge Airport, but this type of project is not one that requires mandatory review by the Airport Land Use Commission. There's no question of compatibility with the airport criteria and no overflight or any sort of deed notices required as it doesn't include residential development. So with all of that said, the project is consistent with the county's airport comprehensive land use plan and no conditions of approval are necessary to achieve that consistency. I do want to note that several of the existing park features are nonconforming to the zoning development standards for yard setbacks. However, there's no expansion or further nonconformity proposed under the current project. And therefore, there's no additional findings required and no variances required for the work. And then any proposed development in the yard setback areas is permissible development within those areas, fences, walkways, et cetera. Also noting, this project fulfills two of the goals in the Guadalajara Town Plan. So as you see those up on your screen, the Guadalajara Town Plan notes that this area has very few community recreation facilities unless Bauer Park is a really important recreational facility serving visitors and residents of the area. So this project will help to continue to make Bauer Park that resource. So with all of that said, the project is consistent with the zoning and general plan airport land use requirements as well as the goals and policies of the Guadalajara Town Plan. There's no hazards associated with this site, no bluff top, no flood plain, none of those concerns. It's not in a highly scenic area or special treatment area. We've included a condition of approval related to the security lighting to ensure it's downcast and shielded or motion censored, just to ensure consistency with dark sky policies. And the site is served by the existing septic system and has water service from North Guadalajara Water Company. No changes to those services are anticipated as a result of the project. There's also no archaeological or cultural resources identified, but I will talk about some mitigation measures that were recommended just to ensure that any unanticipated discoveries are handled properly. Probably the most significant issue on the site is the biological resources. So this site has lots of beautiful natural features and makes it very suitable to be a park, but also a little challenging from some of the analysis as you probably saw within the staff report. So there is Bishop Pine Woodland Community and then also a number of aquatic resources, including a seasonal wetland, ephemeral drainages, the manmade pond I mentioned, and also a ditch. The site is also suitable for numerous wildlife species. So you'll see that there's numerous mitigation measures added to address those and ensure that any impacts are less than significant. I'll say that, you know, you've seen the analysis in the staff report and staff has reviewed to ensure that any new features are maintaining that 50 foot buffer to identified resources. Both the California Department of Fish and Wildlife and Coastal Commission did not express any concerns associated with the buffer distances between the project improvements and the various resources. However, I will talk a little bit later about some of the comments from Fish and Wildlife and then also the Coastal Commission that resulted in a revision to one of the mitigation measures. So yeah, here we are, mitigation measures. So there's six biological resource mitigation measures. I won't run through each one of those, but I will note that the revision from the Department of Fish and Wildlife was related to bio mitigation measure one. And it just recommends removing reference to potential planting of relatively impenetrable vegetation as a protective barrier. They were concerned that it could outcompete the plants that it's intended to protect. So we did make that revision and that's what I will discuss when we discuss the memo that I prepared. But then beyond that, their other comments were just wanting to ensure that a replanting plan be developed and for the Bishop Pine Forest and that that be referred to them for their review and comment as well. So that's been included as a condition of approval on the project. For cultural resources, the mitigation measure is really our discovery clause. And so it mirrors the requirements under county code. Similarly, the geology and soils, that's related to paleontological resources. And so it also mirrors the requirements under county code. So to speak to that update memo that was prepared and distributed to the commission on April 25th, the cultural resources inventory report was accepted by the Archaeological Commission. The Guadalajara Municipal Advisory Council provided comments. And as a result, staff did make some modifications to the initial study and the mitigated negative declaration to address the comments that were received. Several of them were really just, you know, minor clarifications and revisions and were not significant modifications to the document, both the GMAC comments and then also comments that were received during the circulation from the public of the mitigated negative declaration. And then the bio mitigation measure, bio one, that was amended, staff has included inside that memorandum the discussion surrounding substitution of mitigation measures as required under SEQA. And with SEQA, there's certain findings that have to be made in order to substitute a mitigation measure. And the standard is really that the new measure is equivalent or more effective. So in this case, I think it can be seen with certainty that, you know, removing this relatively impenetrable vegetation language is more effective because it is going to ensure that those rare plant resources are protective. And the mitigation measure still contains language for a protective barrier to be established. It's just not including that impenetrable vegetation. So as a result, staff has prepared the red line to the Planning Commission resolution, which was included in Attachments D and E to that memorandum. Attachment D is the red line resolution and Attachment E is the clean resolution. And that language in the red line resolution adds a new whereas clause, just stating about the changes that were made to the mitigation measure and clarifying that recirculation of the document is not required. And then we added additional language to finding number four regarding the substitution of the mitigation measure. And then we did update the conditions of approval in Exhibit A and the mitigation monitoring and reporting program in Exhibit B to reflect those changes. So everything is internally consistent. And then finally, I do want to note that the Coastal Commission did provide comments just this week. And they were very simple. It just said that we do not have any specific recommendations for the staff report at this time, but they noted that they do agree with CDFW's recommendations, which have already been incorporated. And so with that, the recommended action is by resolution, adopt the mitigated negative declaration and grant coastal development use permit U 2025 dash 0002 for the project as proposed by the applicant based on the facts and findings and subject to the conditions of approval and mitigation measures contained in Exhibit A and the mitigation monitoring and reporting program in Exhibit B as modified. And I am happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Julia. Do we have any questions for staff from the commission? Not seeing any. All right. Yes, please.
Probably showing my... I'm just curious, you're going to be doubling the parking thing? Wondering what the thought process is.
Sure. So there was no concern expressed because it's not actually, I think, anticipated that it's going to increase that visitor usage to the site. But I think what it is going to address is possibly some parking that may happen along Old Stage Road where there isn't sufficient parking at this time. And there is a condition requiring any, you know, improvements being done within the right of way to obtain an encroachment permit through the county's Department of Transportation.
That would have been...
I believe so.
Oh, okay.
Deputy County Councilman Matthew Kudrowski, just briefly, Commissioner Richards, can you be closer to your microphone when you're speaking? Some of the mics are pretty far away. Thank you.
I'm learning. Thanks.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to invite the applicant to please come and speak at the podium if we have the applicant in the room. Please state your name at the podium, please.
Good morning. My name is Doug Anderson. I'm Mendocino County's Capital Projects Manager. And I have...
I'm Mike Cook, I'm Principal Landscape Art Act at Integral Landscape Architecture. We are working with the county. We don't have a specific presentation to give, but we're here to answer questions.
Okay. Do we have any commissioner comments or questions? Okay. Do we have any Commissioner comments or questions for the applicant? All right, saying none. Thank you, gentlemen. All right, at this time, I am going to open the public comment. The commission will now hear public comment on this item. The commission will start with public comments in the room and then hear from telecommuters that are connected via Zoom. When called to speak, please state your name for the record. Public comment is limited to three minutes per person. Speakers are asked to please address their comments to the meeting chair and to refrain from using profanity or engaging in conversations with the members of the audience or staff. I did receive two public comment requests. I'm going to use your first name. Please state your full name at the podium. I have Dave for this item who wish to speak. And then again, yes, please state your full name.
Are we on? Good. Good morning. My name is Dave Spock. Thanks, Chair Bobini, for the kind welcome. Good morning, members of the Planning Commission, Director Krog and staff. Thank you very much. I am the Chair of the Mendocino Coast Recreation and Park District Board of Directors. My colleagues have authorized me to offer comment on their behalf. I also live in Gualalla and have detailed knowledge and particular involvement in matters germane to this agenda item. The proposed CDP is a result of thoughtful and thorough work by county staff and consultants who have invited and considered extensive public input and collaboration with the district. As proposed, this project will rehabilitate the only public park south of Point Arena, which provides active and passive recreational opportunities for residents and visitors to our south coast, as well as those from the north coast of Sonoma County. Considering that Bauer Park is a crucial, irreplaceable component of the south coast public recreational infrastructure, the District Board of Directors adopted a resolution on June 19 last year to transfer a one-time state grant of $177,000 to the county for implementation of this project. The Board of Directors' commitment to Bauer Park Restoration Project demonstrates the district's mission to provide affordable, diverse, and inclusive recreational opportunities throughout the 77-mile service area from Gualalla to Westport, the entire populated Mendocino Coast. This commitment has included careful diligence in service of our programmatic and fiduciary duties. As a recreation provider and funding partner, the district has evaluated the recreation features and site development of the proposed park master plan. The district has determined that this proposal will deliver features that are appropriate, well-suited, safe, cost-effective, and accessible for the present and likely future park users and would support district recreational programming to the south coast. The proposed plan for rehabilitation and enhancement would improve areas that are already developed or on ground that has already been disturbed, while minimizing development impacts to habitat or aesthetic resources and respecting existing boundaries with neighbors. Acknowledging the likelihood that rapidly escalating development costs will exceed the present project budget, the proposed master plan and SEQA document provide an effective framework to pursue subsequent phases of development efficiently as additional funding becomes available. As a local agency partner and an invested project stakeholder, the Coast Recreation and Park District Board of Directors encourages favorable consideration by the Planning Commission. Please take action this morning to advance this important project and provide timely benefit to our coastal constituents. Thank you for receiving my comment. Do you have any questions?
Thank you so much.
Thanks again.
And then we had another comment request from Kylie with Mendocino Coast Recreation and Parks as well.
Good morning. I'm Kylie Felisich. I'm the General Manager for Mendocino Coast Recreation and Park District. Recreation capacity is a priority to our district's 77-mile jurisdiction. MCRPD faces large geographical challenges, and the district sees Bauer Park as a crucial facility to deploy recreation programs on the south coast. Bauer Park is a priority with the MCRPD Board of Directors, including the transfer of grant money to projects at Bauer Park. There is potential for future synergy between the county and the district so that Bauer Park may serve the south coast forever. The Mendocino Coast Recreation and Park District encourages approval by the Planning Commission. Please act favorably on this vital project and support this imperative facility for our coastal community. And thank you very much for all your time.
Thank you.
Through the chair. My apology for not submitting any speaker form, but if you're...
All right.
I'd like to...
Yes, please, please state your name.
My name is Kevin Evans, and I am the current Chair of the Gualalla Municipal Advisory Council. And I thank the commissioners for hearing this item today. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you regarding Bauer Park and the county's efforts to restore the park to an operational level that supports the community's use. When the park was unexpectedly closed due to unsafe conditions created by storm damage, the community, GMAC, joined forces with the county and staff and state representatives to develop a plan to reopen the park at the earliest possible opportunity. State Assembly Member Jim Woods and Supervisor Ted Williams worked closely with local residents to secure a state parks rehabilitation grant in the amount of $2.2 million. That is what is funding this project. County staff, along with Integra, engaged with the community to collect valuable input through onsite public meetings, working with key stakeholder groups, the distribution of a resident survey, and maintaining an ongoing communication with GMAC. The coastal development permit that you are reviewing and considering action for is a culmination of hard work and efforts of county staff, the landscape architect, and a community that looks forward to reopening the park and allowing families and visitors to once again enjoy the park. The community and GMAC urges your support in moving this coastal development use permit forward so we can have a park built for our families to enjoy. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Do we have, I think we have all of our members of the public in chambers here today have spoken. Do we have anybody online? Their hand raised?
There are no hands raised on Zoom.
Right. At this time, I'm going to ask staff if they have any final remarks?
No, thank you.
All right. And then if the applicant has any final remarks that they'd like to make? All right, saying none. Thank you. All right, do we have any final questions from our commissioners or staff or the applicant? Commissioner Jones? Commissioner Weedman?
Julia Ack or I would like Krog. I'd like to know when you mentioned what resolution? Is it on the Attachment E?
Yes, Attachment E is the clean resolution.
Yes, okay, thank you. Yeah, right. Okay.
Commissioner Jones? Okay. Commissioner Rogers, any final comments? Sorry. No. Commissioner Pollan?
None from me.
All right, at this time, yes.
Sure, it's in my district, and I'll make a motion for approval. And before that, I just want to thank both the community for working on this because it's been a lot of work. And also, this is like how government actually works well. And I want to thank a fabulous report by staff. And I'm ready to make a motion when?
I got to close. All right. At this time, I'm going to close the public hearing, and then I do invite, at this time, we will no longer take any more public comment, and I, at this time, will invite a motion from the commission.
There we go. Okay. So I approve, make a motion to approve U 2025 dash 0002 for County Mendocino Coastal Development Use Permit for the Bauer Park Restoration and Improvement Grant Project to improve recreational facilities and provide improved accessibility to these features within the park. The project includes various upgrades and repairs to existing amenities, as well as the addition of a few new amenities. And I approve, with all the conditions cited, I'm not going to read them all, per the Attachment E exhibit.
And I'll just amend that motion to include adopting the mitigated negative declaration as well because I know Julia was itching to say that.
That's right. That's great. All right.
Thank you for putting the recommended action up there, Julia. I appreciate it.
We're good.
All right. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right, roll call, please.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Weedman?
Yes.
Commissioner Richards?
Yes.
Commissioner Pollan?
Yes.
Chair Bobini?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
I just want to thank everyone who drove over today and the applicant. Thank you for your coming in and providing comment. All right. Thank you.
Get to work.
And then at this time, we're going to move on to Agenda Item Number Seven, which is matters from staff.
We have no matters from staff today.
Okay.
Thank you.
Do we have Agenda Item Eight, any matters from the commission? None? All right. Final item, Agenda Item Nine, adjournment. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Oh, is it? Okay. I make a motion to adjourn our planning commission today. In favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Any names? None. All right. Thanks, everybody.
All right.